I have a quick question. Is the mayor gonna be here tonight? Has anybody heard?
So he was at Hapo today and I saw him and he mentioned he was gonna be here.
Okay, that's good, cuz if I'm gonna chair the meeting, I'd like to have at least five minutes of advance notice. All right, good evening, everyone. The time is now 6:30. Do we have a forum? It looks like we do. Okay, so we'll get started. Welcome everyone to Monday, November 8, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting. The time is now 6:30 and we will start with our roll call, please. Madam City Clerk.
Mayor Guerrero.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Burisma. Counselor Farmer.
Here.
Counselor Beeler.
Here.
Counselor Restucci.
Here.
Counselor Hicks.
Here.
Counselor Hart.
Here.
Interim City Manager Alba.
Here.
City Clerk Venteria.
Excused.
Interim Finance and Admin Services Director Horner.
Here.
Fire Chief Anderson.
I'm here.
Police Chief Escalera.
Here.
Public Works Director Fisher.
I'm here.
Deputy City Clerk Vantel and I'm here.
All right, did we get any public comments submitted via online or email?
I received none via online or email.
Okay, anyone in the audience who would like to do public comments today?
Yes.
All right, sir Guerrero, state name and city of residence.
Michael Canard. Sunnyside.
Guerrero, you got three minutes.
Thank you. There's been a long time issues of speeding and excessive noise and simultaneously exacerbated by no apparent policing. I live on East Edison right before it becomes West Edison and where Stackhouse intersects with Edison. And the congestion is one thing, but the speed and the noise is getting to be absolutely intolerable. Today, there was a issue of a school bus that evidently was having a little meeting with the riders on the bus. The door was shut and it went on for over five minutes, maybe almost 10 minutes. And during that time, the traffic coming down Stackhouse and the traffic that was waiting behind the bus with the flashing lights on it and every had to come to a stop. Traffic was backed up clear to Zilla Avenue, was backed all the way up Stackhouse to the bridge and it was just a mess. What happened with the when the bus finally pulled ahead after discharging the students was that there were a lot of cars that were all trying to move at the same time. And in the middle of all of this were a couple of hot rods that thought they would show their displeasure at having been held up by flooring it and operating a car that was to begin with altered because it was certainly not the stock factory issued muffler system and running down the road westbound, excuse me, eastbound on Edison and approaching a speed of well, well over 60 miles an hour. Now, this is on a city street with kids that are just been discharged off the bus and it's a situation that is absolutely intolerable. I would heartily suggest that when a car is found to be operating this way, that they are immediately confiscated, that they are charged with ticketed for defects because obviously something has to be altered and that they have to go to court and defend their position of why it was necessary to speed and endanger the lives of everybody around. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who would wish to speak today? Okay, here none. I do want to apologize. I went a little bit out of order. We do have proclamation today, so I'll go ahead and cover that next.
And if I may, Mayor, I know Lindsay Kirfan was trying to get on and she's just connected to audio and she had requested time if we could tonight for.
Okay, so we'll come back to her. I'll just do the proclamation and we'll go back into public comments. Thank you. All right. So, transproclamation, whereas veterans have bravely answered the call to serve and they have earned the dignity that comes with wearing the uniform and defending our country, whereas on Veterans Day, we honor all Americans who have served in the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard, both in time of war and peace. Whereas for nearly 100 years since the end of World War I, Veterans Day has given us a time to pay due respect to our veterans. We have passed a torch of liberty from one generation to the next. Whereas with respect for and a recognition of the contributions our service members have made to the cause of peace and freedom around the world, the Congress has provided that November 11th of each year shall be set aside as a legal public holiday to honor our nation's veterans. Now, therefore, I, Francisco Guerrero, Mayor of the City of Sunnyside, Washington, by virtue of the authority vested in and me by the laws of the State of Washington and on behalf of the Sunnyside City Council, do hereby proclaim Thursday, November 11th, 2021, as Veterans Day in Sunnyside and encourage residents to recognize the fortitude and sacrifice of our veterans. Furthermore, I direct the city manager to display the flag of the United States and the national POW/MIA flag where appropriate and to support any efforts by veterans organizations, schools, and other entities to recognize this day. In testimony whereof, I have here on to send my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sunnyside to be affixed then at the city of Sunnyside this 8th day of November in the year of our Lord 2021. Okay, thank you, council for that. Now I'm gonna go back to our agenda. And so do we have additional public comments from our guests via Zoom?
Yes, I do.
Okay, if we just get our your name and city of residence and we'll allow you three minutes.
Okay, my name is Lindsay Kirfan from Sunnyside. I am a member of the Sunnyside Noon Rotary Club and the event organizer for the Lighted Farm Implement Parade and the Downtown Christmas Market. On behalf of Sunnyside Walmart and A&amp;A Promotions, I'd like to invite the city council members and other community members to the annual Christmas tree lighting on Friday, December 3rd at Centennial Square from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. On behalf of the Sunnyside Noon Rotary Club and Events by LC, I would like to extend an invitation to come down to Centennial Square at 1:00 PM on Saturday, December 4th for the Downtown Christmas Market and at 6:30 for the Lighted Farm Implement Parade. Lastly, we would like to encourage community members and business owners to sign up for Light Up the Night House Lighting Competition that will be held December 10th through the 17th. Last year, we received many compliments from people from other communities on how bright Sunnyside was and we hope that we can continue to do the same. Thank you for allowing me to address the city council.
Thank you for that great information. It allows us to hopefully make some plans and attend those events. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Via Zoom who would like to speak tonight? Okay, here and now, we'll move on to our consent agenda, which is gonna consist of the approval of the minutes for the October 11th, 2021 Regular Meeting. Payroll vouchers numbers 119020 through 119024 and wire transfers as listed for $681,078.4 for the period ending on October 25th, 2021. Claim vouchers numbers 102331 through 102366 and wire transfers as listed for $108,458.47 for the period ending on October 27th, 2021. Claim voucher numbers 102367 through 102399 and wire transfers as listed for $108,457.85 for the period ending on November 3rd, 2021. Councilmembers, does anyone wish to pull an item or get explanation on any of our voucher or claim tickets or the minutes itself themselves?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Farmer, I would like to pull check number 15971 in the amount of $1,856.47 written to Martin Casey.
Sounds good. Council, is there anyone else who likes to pull an item or a check for discussion? Okay, here and now, what is the desire of council on the rest of the consent agenda minus check number 15971?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Restucci. I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Counselor Hart, second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Restucci, second by Counselor Hart to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there any debate on this item? You know, debate, what is the, can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma.
Yes.
Counselor Restucci.
Yes.
Counselor Beeler.
Yes.
Counselor Hicks.
Yes.
Counselor Farmer.
Yes.
Counselor Hart.
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes and zero no votes.
Okay, motion passes for the consent agenda as amended and next we have Counselor Farmer with check number 15971. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir. I have polled each one of these checks to Mr. Casey since we've started. I have disagreed with the contract that he is claiming we owe him from. On my own dime, I contacted an attorney and had him read the contract just to make sure that I was on the right track. The attorney that I contracted said he very well thought that the intent was we did not owe. The contract was very poorly written and very vague. He said that we would probably have to go to court to determine who is right. So I'm pulling this. I don't think we owe it and that's why I pulled it and the attorney seemed to agree with me.
Councilmembers, anyone else care to weigh in? Okay, you know, additional comments, what is desire on check number 15971 and the amount for $1,856,47 cents payable to our former city manager, Martin Casey?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the payment to Mr. Casey.
This is Counselor Restucci. I'll second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Hart, second by Counselor Restucci to authorize the payment to our former city manager, Martin Casey, for check number 15971 and the amount of $1,856.47. Is there any debate on this item? Do we know the debate? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma.
Yes.
Counselor Restucci.
Yes.
Counselor Beeler.
Yes.
Counselor Hicks.
Yes.
Counselor Farmer.
No.
Counselor Hart.
Yes.
Mayor, you have six yes and zero no votes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Up next, we have our active agenda, which is the first item is gonna be 2022 Preliminary Budget Public Hearing, one of two. Receive public comment on the 2022 Preliminary Budget Public Hearing. So this public hearing is being held to receive public comment on the 2022 Preliminary Budget. I will now read the appearance of fairness disclosure. The concern is that this shouldn't be fair, informative substance, as well as appearance. Councilmembers, do any of you have a conflict of interest concerning this issue? Do any of you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing? If your answer is yes, please speak now. Councilmembers, can you hear and consider this in a fair and objective manner? If your answer is no, please speak now. Audience members, at this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to my participation or any other council members' participation in these proceedings. Okay, you're in objections. This public hearing is now open at 6:46 PM. Up next, we will ask our, at this time, we'll hear from our city manager if we receive any comments from the public for this hearing or if there are any citizens here to comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, please do so now.
I received no comments online or via email.
Is there anyone in tonight's Zoom call who would like to make comments on our preliminary budget for 2022? Okay, council members, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, you know, comments or questions from our council, I will close this public hearing at 6:47 PM. Okay, we'll bring it back for the second reading and then if we have additional questions, we can address them at that time as well. So we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is gonna be crane repair. Consider authorizing the NMC manager to expend the $14,843.75 with Waco Corporation to have the crane repaired. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I will turn this over to Public Works Director Fisher to give you more explanations and a report out on it.
Thank you. Yes, this is a little housekeeping. We, every year, we take our crane in to have it certified so that we're able to use it for our maintenance and when we took it in, the inspector noticed that one of our bonnet bolts and nut were broken. And the bonnet's about, it's a round flange base, but it's got about 30 bolts that hold the crane arm to the to the body of the truck. And so once one of those is broken off, the we, at that point, we have to replace all the bolts and so we've had that crane since, I think, 2008. So it's probably a good idea to have those bolts replaced and at the same time, we also need to get the cable that comes on the school. That's original factory cable and they advise we also get that changed out since it's more than 10 years old. So as part of that, get a bolt replaced, get the cable replaced, we're looking at just shy of $15,000. And with that, we will obviously bring this to you guys because it does exceed my authority and the city manager. So with that, I'd like to take any questions.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Burisma, we're still with you. Questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, thanks, sir. I'm just curious. Mr. Fisher, how often do we use this crane? Is this something that is in constant use or do we do we pull it out for emergencies? Or how often is this used?
Well, we use the crane at our, at the wastewater plant. We have to get up in the irrigation basins and and work on pumps and different pieces of equipment. So it gets used pretty frequently at the wastewater treatment plant. And of course, that's the same crane that we use with the exception of this year because we didn't pass inspection. But it's the same crane we use to set the veterans, the walls at the Veterans Plaza. And so that's that's the same crane. It does get used pretty frequently. We've used it before for lift stations, down in the wet wells to pull pumps and whatnot out. So it gets, it get used quite a bit.
And so and so sometimes you're lifting people up with that then too, if they have to get up there in the wastewater treatment plant?
We don't use that basket anymore. The basket that came with that, like I said, back in '08 is no longer an approved, an approved basket. That's funny you asked that because that question came up last Thursday or Friday. One of my guys had brought that up and we still used it and we have the basket, but it's not, we would probably have to buy a new basket to actually put people up in it.
Okay.
So but it's basically what they use it for is the guys will crawl down in the irrigation basins down on the big, that thing's about 25 feet deep. And our guys crawl down in there, then they have the crane crane come over and we'll pull, you know, obviously really heavy pieces of equipment out of those areas that obviously we wouldn't be able to to carry out by hand. So.
Okay, well, I was thinking if we're lifting people with that thing, replacing that cable is a no-brainer. But yeah, that, you still answered my question.
Okay.
Counselor Restucci.
No questions or comments, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Beeler.
Yeah, what's the approximate value of the crane when it's in operation condition?
Um, I don't know what, it's been so long since we bought that. I'm not sure what it, what the original price of it was. Now, I'd say its current value, I'm guessing, is probably between 80 and 100,000, I would think. Replacement of, if we had to replace that piece of equipment, we'd probably be looking at well over 150, 200,000.
So it's really a relatively small part of the operation of the crane. So it looks like it's a justified cost to keep it going. So that's the only question I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Hicks.
No real questions. This is a statement. I've been on the bottom of a crane and been iffy on cables. So I have no problem with changing the cable out with it.
Counselor Farmer.
No questions.
Counselor Hart.
Sounds to me like it's a reasonable amount to spend and I think that that's a worthwhile cause.
And I just have one question. It says amount budgeted, it's 83,000. Does that, was that meant for the crane or is that just operations for that, for that the sewer treatment plant, maybe?
No, the 83,000 is actually the the budgeted line item that's that was approved in last year's budget for external repairs out of equipment rental.
At this point.
83,000, that's, that's the, the approved budget for that line item, which is what we're paying this out of.
And there's still a balance that, or is that the balance remaining of that line item?
No, that was, that was actually the line on the balance in there is about 25,000, I think.
Okay, so there's enough to cover that and then leave some if needed for other later. Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Okay. What is desire, actually, yeah, what is there council on this item?
Counselor Hicks will move to approve.
Counselor Beeler, I'll second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Hicks, second by Counselor Beeler to authorize the NMC to manage to expend the $14,843.75 with the Waco Corporation to have that crane repaired. Is there any debate on this item? You know, debate, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma.
Yes.
Counselor Restucci.
Yes.
Counselor Beeler.
Yes.
Counselor Hicks.
Yes.
Counselor Farmer.
Yes.
Counselor Hart.
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes and zero no.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. Up next, we have Street Crime Sergeant. Consider proving an ordinance amending the compensation and classification schedule to reduce the number of patrol officers by one and increase the number of sergeants by one and approve an amendment to the 2021 budget in the amount of no more than 5,000 for salary and benefits. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is something that was brought forward at the workshop session. This is just the housekeeping end of it. Right, basically going from no additional personnel involved. So it's essentially a reduction in the number of police officers and an increase in the number of sergeants. So if you look on the salary schedule, which, let's see, can you go down a little bit, Janice? Go down to the next part of the agenda on this one. Compensation schedule. Okay, well, I'm not able to show you exactly what that is, but it was in your packet. And so what this is, this is the ordinance to change the makeup or the composition of our classification and compensation schedule, but it does not change the number of persons that are on it. So all it does is move from 20 to 19 in patrol and from five to six in sergeant. And then we're asking for no more than $5,000 in compensation for the rest of 2021.
Okay, council, we'll start with Counselor Restucci. Questions or comments on this item?
No questions or comments, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Beeler.
Does this change at all on having people in the union outside the union or both positions in the union bargaining agreement?
Both positions are in the union, so it would not change their status at all.
Thank you.
Counselor Hicks.
No questions or comments.
Counselor Farmer. Counselor Farmer?
Uh, I I like the the idea. I can't wait to see the results of the unit.
Counselor Hart?
No questions.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
I have no questions or comments. Thank you.
And I have one question. So if we were doing this, we're changing a patrol to a sergeant. If we were to go back, is that going to be an item we have to take to the bargain to the union to reverse that? Or is that going to be something we could do just like we did tonight?
So City Council authorizes the number of positions. So if you would decide to take one of the positions away, that would be something that we probably would have to bargain with them a little, you know, because that is change in working conditions. But I I'm sure that we could figure something out with them.
Okay. All right, Council, what's your desire on this item?
The Deputy Mayor Burisma moved to approve an ordinance amending the compensation and classification schedule to reduce the number of patrol officers by one and increase the number of sergeants by one and approve an amendment to the twenty twenty one budget in the amount of not more than five thousand dollars for salary and benefits.
This is Counselor Ristucci. I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Deputy Mayor Burisma, second by Counselor Ristucci to approve an ordinance amending the compensation and classification schedule to reduce the number of patrol officers by one and increase the number of sergeants by one and approve an amendment to the twenty twenty one budget and the amount of no more than five thousand dollars for salary and benefits. Is there any debate on this item?
Mr. Mayor, this is Joe Hart.
Yes, ma'am.
And it concerns me a little bit that it does then become a union issue if we do were to approve it in this in this particular form. Making the sergeants are part of the union. I I mean, I I assume this has always been the case.
Sergeants have their own union.
They do. They have their own bargaining unit.
That is correct.
Thank you.
No, no, they don't.
No, they don't. They're a part of the police patrol guild and the
The sergeants had their own guild for quite a while. Did they get rid of it?
They're the only sergeant. Go ahead, Police Chief Esclera.
It's the the sergeants have been part of the the police guild since I've been here. So if they had one, it would have been prior to me being here.
Understood. Thank you.
What Counselor, continue, please?
Well, in as much as that we got, you know, we're always looking for a patrolman. I'm just a little concerned about that as well as taking people off the street. The sergeants are not necessarily on the streets as as much as they might be. So I'm a little I'm I'm just leery of this particular change. Thank you.
Mayor, could I add something there?
Let's finish off with the list and then we'll come back to your Counselor Ristucci, okay?
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
I don't have any comments at this time, sir.
Okay, all right, Counselor Ristucci, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Hart, my understanding, and this has been as far as I've known it, the the council sets the organizational chart. The the manager comes to us with what they want, and the council agrees to that. And and that's how we've been able to make changes in the organizational chart in the past. And and an easy way to understand the analogy, Don Vleger used to say this all the time, but it actually makes really good sense. You know, the council builds the machine, the manager runs it. If the council, if the manager wants to change something in the organization, a cog or wheel, if it's the same cog or wheel and size and doesn't change the budget, the manager is has the authority to do that already without coming to council. But if they want to change the size of the cog or or change the position in any way, then they have to come back to council. That's my understanding of how that works.
So so just to to re- reply to that. So what you're saying is that if if at some time they they don't need a a street sergeant for crime, which I thought they all were, then we could go back to that person being on patrol as opposed as part of that organizational chart.
All right. I understand it. I mean, I'll defer to the city manager and the city attorney, but I mean, in in the eighteen years I've done it, that's the way we've done it. Whenever the manager came to us and wanted to make changes to the organizational chart, the council approved those changes. So I would assume that if we're going to make changes to the police department, fire department, or water sewer, doesn't matter. The manager is going to come back and and make recommendation to change the organizational chart, and the council is going to approve that.
Thank you.
Um, my comments, I really don't have a problem with moving up to a sergeant patrol, but obviously, we had a comment from our citizen today that we don't have enough patrols going out in the community to begin with to address some of these potential, you know, altered vehicles are are, you know, probably loudmouthers, who knows where it is, but that does concern me. Obviously, the the person is going to be out there. This is going to be part of a different unit who's going to be addressing just the street crimes. But again, you know, I don't know, I I just got another complaint this morning from another citizen that they don't see enough of our police officers out in the street. I really couldn't speak to how I'm out along there out on the street or how often or, you know, for how long. But I mean, that's a comment that I got just this morning, which is kind of interesting that coincides with our you know, citizen who spoke today about patrols out in the community. I don't know. I mean, if if we're going to take one patrol officer off the street and citizens citizens don't see them enough to begin with, I am a little concerned about that. So either we find a way to, well, not us, but City Manager or or Chief find a way to increase patrols out so that our citizens are seeing the police out in our streets and talking to citizens, talking to businesses, whatever the case might be. That way, the perception that they are out in the community and they are looking for a crime is it's more visible than it is now. Again, that's just one of the comments I got this morning and it's kind of interesting that coincides with what we just heard this this, you know, this meeting. So those are my comments. I don't have a problem moving to to that sergeant position. But I am concerned that we might be getting less patrols out there with one less patrol officer out in the street. All right, Council, what is your desire on this item?
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor. This is Counselor Ristucci.
Counselor Beeler, I'll second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Ristucci, second by Counselor Beeler.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Do we not have a motion already on the floor?
I don't believe so, not on this one.
I think we were in debate, were we not?
Yeah, I think I made the motion and Mr. Ristucci had seconded.
That is correct. You are.
Oh, my apologies. In that case, is there any additional debate on this item? All right, you know, debate, can we get a roll call, please? Roll call vote, please?
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Yes.
Counselor Ristucci?
Yes.
Counselor Beeler?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
No.
Mayor, you have six yes and zero no votes.
One no vote.
One no vote.
Sorry about that, yes, one no.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Council. Up next, we have Allen Road Sanitary. I'm sorry, I'm just going to go ahead. Garbage rate increase. Consider adopting an ordinance updating S M C two dot O two to include solid waste rate increase effective for the twenty twenty two fiscal year. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Council. I will defer this to Ms. Horner. This is actually just mainly a housekeeping item as part of the contract for Yakima Waste. It's a annual C P I, which we agreed to in their contract. I will let Ms. Horner answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, yes, as the city manager said, it's a five point zero three percent increase based on the contract language that requires us to go by the C P I from June to June of each year. It is higher than than it typically has been in the past few years at that five point oh three percent. That essentially means that for somebody who has a ninety six gallon can, they'll go from thirteen dollars and thirty eight cents to fourteen dollars and five cents per month. Happy to answer any questions.
I think we'll start with Counselor Beeler. Questions or comments on this item?
No questions or comments.
Counselor Hicks?
No questions or comments.
Counselor Farmer?
No questions or comments.
Counselor Hart?
I'm sorry, could you, the 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 amount, the size of the garbage unit, did you say what that was? Was there a specific size?
Um, following the this cover sheet was the list of new rates. So the typical sized trash can that everybody has, the ninety six gallon, that's the price I just quoted right now. So it'll go from thirteen thirty eight to fourteen oh five. The majority of our customers have that size.
Okay.
But you can see the other the other amounts down there.
All right, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
So as I read this, as I understand it, this is basically a pass through, correct? We are receiving higher rates and we're passing that on to residents. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Ristucci?
I just have one question. Ms. Horner, I think it's Ms. Alba that brought it up. Did we have some issues with our garbage vendor and they either owed us money or we owed them money, something?
There was, um, there is the the portion of the contract that specifies how Yakima Waste bills us for their services or how we remit payment to them has been handled differently than what the contract says. The actual process has been done differently than what is specified in the contract based on what Yakima Waste wanted to do. But this entire contract is actually under negotiation right now because of that issue and just because we're looking at other vendors and our garbage fund has historically barely sort of passed by every year with without losing money. So we are looking at this contract as a whole.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
And I don't have any questions on this item. I know we talked about potentially doing ourselves. I know it's quite cost prohibitive, but I know the communities are able to do it and they are doing it. So that might be something to keep on and back of some of our mind at least for for potential future consideration.
And that is part of the consideration in looking at this contract.
Thank you. All right, Council, what is your desire on this item?
You're you're
Okay, Counselor Hicks will move to approve.
Deputy Mayor Burisma, I will second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Hicks, second by Deputy Mayor Burisma to adopt an ordinance amending S M C two dot zero two to include solid waste rate increase effective for the twenty twenty two fiscal year. Is there any debate on this item? You're in no debate. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Yes.
Counselor Ristucci?
Yes.
Counselor Beeler?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes and zero no votes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Up next, we have Allen Road Sanitary Sewer Improvement Award. Consider approving a resolution and authorize the the interim city manager to execute a construction contract with Granite Construction Company in the amount of one hundred and fifty seven thousand six hundred and four dollars and twelve cents to construct the Allen Road Sanitary Sewer Improvement. Madam City Manager?
I will defer this to Public Works Director Fisher for more information.
Uh, thank you. Um, yes, this, so this project is the is the first phase of the C C H lift station project that we've been working with council for the last couple of years. So basically, this, the what we're trying to get an approval for tonight is the the section of gravity sewer that will go from the outpost lift station into the new Catholic Charities lift station, which was approved last year through council. Now, that was part of our upsizing agreement that we had had brought to council and was approved. So this, uh, so this section here, once the Catholic Charities and Granite Construction, they're also the contractor for C C H, were the successful bidder on this project as well. Once they get the wet well in for the Catholic Charities for their onsite infrastructure, then we will come in, looks like it'll probably be January or February before we even execute this, the the project that's in front of you tonight. Because we have to wait for that wet well to get set and get the inverted elevations and grade set for that. And then we will start gravity flowing into that into that wet wall, which was the our intention. That's what we had, we had planned to do. So this is kind of that first phase we talked about. There was four or five lift stations we were going to take offline and gravity feed into this. This is that first step in 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 that. And now, of course, we have the the multifamily housing that's coming off of Lincoln. That's still in the works. And we did get approval from S V I D to cross that canal to come over and gravity feed that and take another lift station offline. So that'll be something we'll bring to to council, I'm guessing probably mid mid year in twenty two. But tonight, what we're looking for is to to award the contract to grant to Granite Construction. Their their bid came in about six percent under engineer's estimate, which is always good, especially in this this day and age that doesn't happen too often. So so anyway, with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you for that. And we'll start with Counselor Hicks.
No questions or comments.
Counselor Farmer?
No questions.
Counselor Hart?
No questions.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
No questions, just a comment. I'm in favor of this. I want to see this move forward. I love the whole concept of using gravity because we never get a bill. It never goes out. We never have to maintain it. I think there's potential to save the city a great deal of money over the next few years. So I think this is a fantastic idea. Let's make this happen.
Counselor Ristucci?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Beeler?
No questions or comments.
And no questions comes from me either. So what is your desire on this item, Council?
Counselor Beeler, I move to approve.
Counselor Hart, second.
Motion by Counselor Beeler, second by Counselor Hart to approve a a resolution and authorize the N M City Manager to execute a contract, a a construction contract with Granite Construction Company in the amount of one hundred and fifty seven thousand six hundred and four dollars and twelve cents to construct the Allen Road Sanitary Sewer Improvement. Is there any debate on this item? You're in no debate. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma?
Yes.
Counselor Ristucci?
Yes.
Counselor Beeler?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes and zero no votes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes. Up next, we have items from council members. Mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. I have not received any applications, so we'll keep that open. Council requests status report. Madam City Manager?
So in reviewing this, there wasn't really anything new that I saw needed to be updated. Pretty much you've been in the loop on what we have going on so far. And if there's any new items you'd like to add, I welcome welcome that.
Counsel, any additional items or questions on the items already on the status report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our next agenda, which is going to be other reports, announcements, and our questions by council, and we'll we'll start with Counselor Farmer.
No comment.
Counselor Hart?
I guess I just want I guess, I just want to go back to the business of, of the speeding through town. The earlier we had the comments during public comments regarding. Regarding speeding. And there has seemed to me to be an uptick in the speeding through town, even past the high school here on Sixteenth and. On Lincoln. And so I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, I know we've talked before about putting those, those slow them down signs out. Uh, I think we need to be making some use of those. Obviously, something over there on Edison, past the railroad tracks, by the railroad tracks. Something there needs to happen. But also on Sixteenth North Avenue is, is historic for speeders. And there's just been, I think we need to get our patrolman out there and get those signs out there and just do a better job of. Trying to at least take the little bit of the wind out of those. Kids of sales, their cars running down the road there. That and their noisy, noisy music, but who cares about that? I want them to slow down.
Deputy Mayor Burisma, the reports, announcements, and your questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So LTAC met after our last meeting and. We, uh, as I had mentioned previously, we've decided to try to meet a little bit more often and keep up with what's going on. Uh, the folks from Yakima and the directory there were able to be with us and offered some comments and were very helpful there. We also re-familiarized ourselves with our policies, especially those for awarding funds. And we had a chance to talk about that a little bit. I think it's helpful for us to do that every so often. I know it was certainly helpful for me and I think the committee members appreciated that as well. Next meeting will be in January after council's first regular meeting when council is, uh, reconstituted or whatever the correct term for that is. And in that meeting, the agenda will include taking a look at the Come to the Sun website. And any updates, modifications, and changes that could be made to that. We've had some comments on that, that. It, it could use a bit of a facelift and so we're going to take a look at that and see if we can make some recommendations there. Also, we were able to welcome Miss Peggy Beeler as the new member and it was nice to have her there and her comments. So, um. We have a committee that is potentially complete, so that is extremely helpful. And in response to Ms. Hart's comments about the loud music in the motorcycle world. We've got a statement that says if it's too loud, you're too old. So.
I was talking about speeding.
Anyway, that's all I've got, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Ristucci.
I know, no questions or comments this time, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Beeler.
No questions or comments.
Counselor Hicks.
Oh, just a comment or a question. Uh, we doing anything else on the homeless issue? I guess we had an incident where one walked into someone's house.
Madame City Manager, anything on that?
I'm not aware of that. Um, I'm, I know that. Wavy Cog is talking about, isn't it, isn't that correct? Counselor Ristucci, that that's their.
Well, yeah, we are in conversation. We're in conversations with the county right now, the county commissioners right now. About the city's twenty one sixty three funds and other homeless monies that are available to cities. We're working with them to try and come up with a solution where the cog will take over homeless for all of the cities and the county in the valley. Unfortunately, the county is pushing back on us right now and so. Um, the, the cog's working with our attorney and with our members and we'll keep everyone apprised of what we're going to do. But right now, I can't answer anything else.
So Counselor Hicks, um, is there any specific? Any specifics you'd like to see or, or hear or get a report on?
No, this is a general question. Like I said, I know it's been on the back burner for a while. We've been trying to get stuff done, but that's. If the county is doing it, that's on them, not us. Just trying to find a happy medium.
Yes, and, um, just, I only have one report. Uh, I attended the hospice gala for the. Patriot care here in Sunnyside and, uh. It was extremely well attended. There was a good, good, uh, turnout of, uh, of, uh, community members. And it's unfortunate it was, it was not in Sunnyside. Uh, obviously, they have outgrown. Our buildings here in town that we have available for this event. But yeah, really looking forward to one of these days being able to host them back in Sunnyside and be able to take advantage of all those. Uh, guests to show up for that event and I'm sure more than a few guys stayed overnight. Um, it was a, a nice event, well attended. I'm sure that they, they collected plenty of, um. Funding for their, their services they provide. And, um, just a little sad that it wasn't in Sunnyside. But, um, the, the comment, uh, in line with Counselor Hicks, I have had about two or three maybe comments about individuals seeing. Homeless individuals over by the Dollar Tree. Um, but I, I drove by it and didn't see anything. I'm not sure if maybe the police department made contact with them and were able to help and move along, but. Again, it's one of those things that, um, I have been getting comments every so often. Um, and, um, not sure what we can do about it, but it sounds like, uh, Wavy Cog and, um, is looking at some options and we'll just, um, wait and see. Uh, any additional questions or comments by council? All right, hearing none, we'll go move on to our upcoming council meetings. Madame City Manager.
Okay, so at the November twenty second, uh, council meeting, we have our second and final public hearing on the budget. Um, false alarm ordinance update. That one may move, but we, I think we'll have enough. To be able to bring forward. Um, we're looking at a program that Toponish uses, so. That may be, uh, an item for us to do. The workshop on December sixth. We will be doing a Sixth Street Improvement Project update. And then preliminary Platts code update and the city safety plan. And then hopefully our last meeting of the year, um, we will have the twenty twenty two budget adoption. And preliminary Platts code update and the final, uh, budget amendment. And then at the January third workshop, we'll have the personnel policy review. Um, and then I would hope that that work, first workshop, we could. Discuss where people are on the standing committees. And then we'll be introducing new council members at that meeting.
All right, council, if you have any items for the agenda, please, um, get those to our city manager and we'll get them on there. Uh, up next, we have items from department heads.
So I would like to report that, um, we have received an application for the Open Civil Service Commission. Um, and I have appointed David Timmermans. Uh, he is a, um, past volunteer firefighter, um, worked for, uh, the volunteer capacity for sixteen years. Um, and not that I'm advocating an age thing, but he is in the younger set, which is nice. Because it seems like we get a lot of people that are kind of. You know, retired and I'm not that I don't want people that are retired to volunteer. It's nice to have someone that. Um, is, is younger and wanting to serve on these boards and commissions because as you all know, it's hard to get people to serve. Um, so I've issued that letter for his civil service appointment and he should be attending his first meeting next week. Which brings our board back to full capacity. Um, otherwise, just business as usual. Um, I did attend the benefit with Mayor Guerrero and his wife. It was very nice. And, uh, just very well done and it gives me a lot of ideas on. How can we get something like that for Sunnyside because the events have outgrown any of our facilities. And you're right, mayor, I think that that's something we'll have to look at in the future. Um, and otherwise, I will pass this on to Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just, I have one quick update. Um, so today, uh, I attended me and Elizabeth, the kickoff meeting for the, uh, citywide, uh, energy, uh, upgrades for the, the audit. And so, uh, basically had about a one hour meeting, uh, with, uh, two gentlemen from the, uh, Department of Enterprise Services with, uh, State of Washington. And then two members of Amoresco, um, and they're, they'd come, uh, I think two or three minutes ago and had presented this program. And, uh, of course, council was, uh, was, was in support of it. And I, I'm sure, uh, once the. Uh, we get the results of the walkthrough that took, they, they finished about three fifteen today, so it's about a four, five hour walkthrough. I had Mitch Ziegler take them around all the facilities of the well sites. Uh, we were at the fire station for the meeting, so they obviously did the walkthrough for that building, uh, Law and Justice. Um, basically every facility that we have, senior center, museum. Um, they took a look at, looking at lighting, HVAC controls, upgrades. Um, anything we can do. Um, they said they may even be able to, uh, at least give us some sort of, uh, recommendation for the. For the pigeons at the, uh, at the fire station. So maybe they can, they can help us try to mitigate that issue. So. Um, other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, uh, Chief Escalera.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, all I have to report is that on May first, we, we officially took over, uh. Emergency operations or communication operations for the city of Toponish in their, uh, in their police department. Um, it was not an easy thing to do. Uh, it was something that, uh, you know, that should take, uh, months to, uh, to, to get the, uh, hardware and get the. And, uh, get the logistics laid out and the infrastructure, um, developed and purchased and installed and working properly. Uh, we had to do that within a matter of weeks and, um, you know, so I, I really want to say thank you to my staff, my administration, everybody who. Had put a significant amount of time, uh, and effort into making that happen for them and, uh, they are operating today. Uh, every day is a learning curve and adjustments have to be made and. You know, a special thank you to Chief Clary over at, uh, Toponish P E for, for being very flexible and. And his staff were being very flexible. Uh, but it is, uh, it is operational, it's underway and. Um, and it's putting a, it's going to be a significant long month here, uh. If not longer and, and on our staff. And so we, we are really taxing our communication staff. Uh, they're coming in, uh, one day. Of their, uh, days off every, you know, every week, uh, everybody's rotating through that. So. Uh, to pull a twelve hour shift in order to provide our, our twelve, our twenty four hour coverage for them. So it's, it's moving, but. It's, uh, it's certainly taken its, its toll, but it's, uh, but we got it going and everything appears to be successful at this time and. And, uh, I just wanted to, I wanted to let you know that, but I also want on the record that our staff did an amazing job. Of, uh, pulling this thing off in a matter of weeks. That's all I have.
This, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
May I ask a question of, uh, chief?
Um, I don't see why not.
Um, I was curious as how did the, uh, the trucker trunk or treat? Um, distribution go that you held this year? I know you, it was held, handled differently. I was just curious how, how that went.
Oh, that went excellent. Uh, that was very well received. Uh, we got nothing but compliments. Across the board, uh, on that and, uh. And it was a great partnership with, uh, Walmart, the fire department, um, the school district. Everybody that was, uh, that was involved and put that thing together just did an amazing job and the kids just loved it and, uh. And, and despite the restrictions, um, you know, our, our personnel and Walmart staff and the fire department, everybody involved. They were able to get some significant face time. We didn't think that we were going to get as much face time as we did. Um, with these kids and, uh, but it went super. It just, we, we couldn't have asked for anything better.
Awesome. Thank you.
Next, I'll ask, uh, Ms. Warner if she'll report out for the finance department.
Thank you, Madame City Manager. So, um. I wanted to let you all know that the, um, ARPA utility payment assistance program is going very well. We've received now a total of one hundred and twenty seven applications and we've been able to fund eighty seven of those at this time. Um, so we've paid out about fifty five thousand dollars. Um, we do have two hundred thousand that was approved for twenty twenty one. So hopefully we will be able to get all of that distributed to our residents as we can through the rest of the year. Um, and then continue that into next year, which you guys did approve, um, at a hundred thousand dollars for next year. Um, the other item I wanted to make sure council and everyone was aware of is that the. Recreation Department is going to do their Thanksgiving to go event for Thanksgiving meals this year. So, um, Gwen Weider, our recreation coordinator, has put in a ton of time and effort into. Um, getting sponsors from Safeway, Walmart, grocery outlet, Bon Vinos. Starbucks, Pepsi. Um, they're getting volunteers from Rotary Key Club and the Lions Club to put on this event on November twentieth. Um, which will be held at the community center. It'll be a walk up, um, meals for one dollar. And it'll be from noon to five PM. And so it'll be a full meal. Um, the recreation department and is hoping to serve up to three hundred people. And I believe that they are delivering. Um, I want to stay close to fifty meals to the senior center in addition to that. So, um, we're very excited to be able to do that again this year. And that is all I had.
Okay, and next I'm going to talk to, uh, Chief Anderson, but before he starts, I did want to let council know that today. I participated in an interview. Uh, as a judge that I'm going to be a part of the fire department's first, uh, mustache contest. So our firefighters are having a month, a month of no shave. Uh, what is it? No shave November. And they all were, um, very gracious today and let the, I, I believe it was K and D O. Um, film their mustaches and I gave a short little. Um, announcement because I'm going to be one of the judges, so I'm going to let Chief Anderson now report out on what else is going on.
Yeah, I have a couple, a couple of things. Uh, we're still working on the, uh, ground emergency trans, medical transport application for. For this past year. Um, in that, uh, hopefully that'll be completed next week. Um, it's due at the end of the month, but I think we'll be done with it next week. Um, I also did receive, uh, communication from the state that the previous or the payments that we received this year from last year's application. There was a, there was a little hiccup on the state's end and so we're going to be receiving an additional fourteen thousand and some change. Um, and also today I received the packet from FEMA for, uh, Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, which we. Attempted to participate in last year, but there was a, a couple glitches and we were unable to apply for, uh, the first round of it. And, um, but this year we're going to be early and we're hoping to, we got, we're prioritizing a couple of things, but we're hoping to buy some things that'll improve safety and. And operations and replace some of the equipment that's outdated and non-functional in the department. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
And Deputy City Clerk Grangell.
I have nothing to report.
And that is everyone, Madame City Manager.
That is everyone. I wrote them down this time so I wouldn't forget someone.
Okay, thank you. So, um, in this case, we'll adjourn it. There's no further business coming to council and with that objection. We will adjourn this meeting at seven thirty six PM. Thank you. Everyone have a good night. Sorry, Darko side. They like savings and all. All right.
Night. You know, yeah. Thanks a lot, Mr. Burisma.
And you're just making sure you're staying awake.
Not at all.
Good night.